Good evening, everyone, and welcome to your Apex Town Council meeting. We're gonna start the meeting, call to order, and then we are going to, we're gonna go ahead and have a moment of silence, and then we'll go for a moment in silence, and then we will hope that you would please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Thank you. Can you join us, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so if you came in on the podium, there are agendas. If you want to take time to get them, if you have not already gotten one, please do so. There also are some magnets that say Think Apex and some stickers as well. And then if you plan to speak in our public forum or in our public hearing, this yellow sheet up front also to provide you with our policy. So if you have not already signed up, please do so at this time. Right, and so we'll go ahead into our presentations. So first presentation is from the Home Builders Association of the Raleigh Representatives.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Paul Kane. I'm the CEO of the Home Builders Association of Raleigh and Wake County. And I'm also here as the representative of Operation Coming Home. I'm the corporate secretary, a board member, and kind of the spokesperson. Operation Coming Home is coming to Apex. Operation Coming Home is a 501(c)(3) organization that builds new homes for injured veterans and the family of fallen soldiers. Operation Coming Home has been in existence since 2008 and is currently working on the 19th home for injured veteran. Almost all of the homes have been built in and around Wake County, with one exception, we built one in South Carolina, and we're never gonna do that again.[154.72][154.72](Laughter).
Wow, you're on the record, you know.[158.44][158.44](Laughter).
Don't tell anybody in South Carolina I said that. But we really consider the Triangle to be the home of Operation Coming Home. It started out as a group of home builders that were building homes under the old ABC television show Extreme Makeover Home Edition. And after dealing with all the constraints and details of how ABC wanted to do it, the local builder said, "We can do this ourselves." And when the idea came up to build it for injured veterans who were injured in combat operations, the idea just took off, and it has gone like wildfire. As I say, we're currently working on our 19th home in Fuquay Varina. And so for home number 20, and 20 is always a notable mark, we have identified a family, a recipient family, and would like to build the home here in Apex. And we're very excited to bring Operation Coming Home to Apex. For many years, the organization was focused only on injured veterans. And more recently, we have started focusing on the families of fallen veterans, and that is the case here. In this instance, it'll be the second home for Operation Coming Home built in honor of a fallen veteran and for the family that he left behind. I'm gonna leave a little bit more of the detail on that to the speaker that's gonna follow me. But I can tell you that every single home that Operation Coming Home has built has left such an amazing imprint, not only on the recipient family, but on the builders involved, the contractors involved, the community involved, and the town or city in which it's located. In fact, the most common question we get from builders after completing an Operation Coming Home project is, "When can I do this again?" It involves contractors, suppliers, and even towns and cities who participate in giving to help make this thing a reality, because at the end of the day, this home is given as a gift to the recipient. I've had some people say, "Well, you know, we don't like handouts." But this isn't a handout. This is a thank you for the service that was given to our country, and in that regard, even a brand-new home hardly seems sufficient. So with that, that's the background, and we're very excited to be bringing this to Apex. But at this point, I would like to turn the microphone over to the developer and builder of this project here in Apex, Experience One, Mr. Corey Schmidt.
Thank you, Paul. Good evening, town council members and the rest of our wonderful town staff present this evening. My name is Corey Schmidt, and I'm one of the owners of Experience One Homes. It is my honor and privilege to be here in front of you tonight. As both a developer and the main builder in Sweetwater, we are thrilled to have the opportunity to build a home for such a worthy family with such an amazing organization like Operation Coming Home. There are many people in this country who have been touched, one way or another, by war in the Middle East, and I am unfortunately part of that group. Trying to get through this without getting too emotional. I lost a friend of mine on October 15th, 2005, while he was deployed in Iraq. Burying him in Arlington Ceremony, excuse me, Arlington Cemetery is one of the most memorable experiences that I'll never forget in my entire life. It's an awesome experience. I was introduced to this organization when another friend of mine was awarded Hero Number Six in August of 2013. That key ceremony was 13 months after he lost both of his legs while serving his country in Afghanistan. Needless to say, this has been a cause very near and dear to my heart, and I feel it's providential that we were selected to build Hero Home Number 20 after being on the waiting list for almost three years. If you think about that, there's that many builders that want to be building a home to give away to the heroes that have served our country. Although we've only just begun to know Amy Dozier, who is the recipient of the home, and her daughter, over the last few weeks, they are both truly amazing people. She is the widow of Army Staff Sergeant Jonathan Dozier, who made the ultimate sacrifice on January 9th, 2008, while deployed in Iraq. This was just two short years after they were married and less than a year after their daughter was born. A few years beyond John's death, Amy decided she was ready to give back to the community that had done so much for her during her grief journey. With the support of family and friends, she went back to Park University and received her master's degree in nonprofit and community service leadership. With a platform and post-traumatic growth, she is an advocate for other Gold Star families. Understanding the unique challenges many survivors faced during the acute bereavement period and beyond, Amy helps those survivors find their true potential through activities and expanding their boundaries. She and her family are also passionate about connecting veterans with the community. And while Amy continues to move forward in her life in many ways, she's still fiercely committed to honoring the sacrifice that her husband made for the freedoms we sometimes take for granted. We can all be living his legacy, serving others one small kind act at a time. While my business partners and I will be providing the home site, the management, and many other components of her home, I have wonderful trade partners that have eagerly agreed to provide many other labor and materials for this home. The amount of enthusiasm that I get on the phone calls and contacts I make and asking for what they may be willing to donate is just, it's an awesome thing. I hope that each of you is excited about this opportunity as I am to welcome Amy and her daughter to Apex and to show her why it was voted the number-one place to live. In that spirit, I'm respectfully asking you to consider waiving the fees for the construction of her home. I know how wonderful this town is as a resident to raise a family, so I thank you all for your time and listening to me talk. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Give you questions for me?
So we're gonna, you'll be here for New Business Two. So just as you reminded to council that if you have any burning things, you can go ahead.
Can we clap?
Yes, you can.[555.82][555.82](Applause). Thank you so much. So again, we'll be discussing this in New Business Two. So now we have presentation two, and I was supposed to do this with Mayor Lance Olive, so I will do this on my own. So this is a proclamation on the Think Apex Day 2019. Whereas Think Apex was created in 2014 as an initiative to encourage a local mindset by all parts of the Apex community, including businesses, residents, and visitors, it encourages those in and around Apex to support and invest in the local and unique aspects of our community in order to create a stronger and more vibrant economic environment and quality of life. By fostering a local mindset, Think Apex empowers a community to celebrate, engage, play, volunteer, shop, eat, and work locally. And whereas Think Apex has a unique web presence that promotes local events, small businesses, and an award ceremony that highlights members of the community who make a large impact. And whereas, the Think Apex webpage averages approximately 1,000 page views per month. And whereas, the first annual Think Apex Awards were presented in 2016. And whereas, another component to this growing initiative is Think Apex Day, which will be a day dedicated to giving back to the Apex community by thinking and acting in ways that will positively impact the town and the people who live here. And whereas, citizens can go to the Think Apex webpage at www.thinkapex.biz to get more information on Think Apex Day and to register to multiple volunteer opportunities and activities. And whereas, citizens can also create their own activity and share it by posting on social media using the hashtag #PeakProud. Now, therefore, the Apex Town Council does hereby proclaim Saturday, Apex 27th, 2019, as Think Apex Day in the town of Apex, and encourages all citizens to consider some form of participation, either formal or otherwise, that will further enhance the commitment to our community and to one another. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Apex, North Carolina, to be affixed this the 16th day of April 2019, Nicole L. Dozier, Mayor Pro Tem. And I will sign that. And I'll present it to the clerk later.
Can we clap again?
Yes. Thank you. All right, so we have a third presentation that I will do on behalf of Mayor Lance Olive. This is a proclamation recognizing April 8th through April 14th as National Telecommunicator Week. If I could ask Captain McKinney and Rick Thomas to come. So I'll read this, and then we can take a photo. All right. So proclamation from the office of the mayor, National Telecommunicator Week 2019. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Apex Communicators Center. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators of the Apex Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas, each has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now, therefore, I, Nicole L. Dozier, Mayor Pro Tem of the town of Apex, North Carolina, declare the week of April 8th through April 14th, 2019, as National Telecommunicator Week in Apex in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our town and citizens safe. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Apex, North Carolina, to be affixed this the 16th day of April 2019. I will sign that now and take a picture. All right. Okay, thank you so much. You don't wanna clap?
We did, we did.
Give me some time to get back to my seat. Okay, all right, so now, this is the time where we enter our consent agenda. All consent agenda items are considered routine to be enacted by one motion with the adoption of the consent agenda and without discussion. So I understand there is one add-on and then two modifications, and so if I could ask the manager to please explain what they are for the council?
Yes, ma'am. So at your places, there was a stapled packet and a single sheet. The staple packet for consent number seven, consent item number seven, we're striking out three words in the motion, which says the attached resolution authorizing, and if I could count, I would realize that's four, I went to Syracuse. There's four words, the attached resolution authorizing. So that, all it does is, it doesn't change the motion, it just strikes out any reference to resolution, because this does not have to be done by resolution.
So it says, "Motion to authorize the sale of..."
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And then the next page in that staple packet is an add-on consent item, and this is to enact a temporary parking ordinance to prohibit parking on streets between 11:00 PM on Saturday, April 27th, and 8:00 AM on Sunday, April 28th. You'll see the list of streets there, and you'll see a map that shows where those streets are. This is to allow the moving of the house that the town purchased that's on Mason Street, and it's being moved to Saunders Street below the Police Department. So they're gonna begin their work at around 3:00 in the morning, moving this house, to try to get it done when there's not a lot of traffic and not a lot of demand on parking. The reason to start at 11:00 is to allow the police to be sure that the cars are actually off the streets at night, so they can get this move done. So that's added on. The separate page, Consent Eight, this is just to be sure that the council has the correct cover sheet. If you clicked on the agenda from the link you received from the clerk, the cover sheet was incorrect. The agenda item was correct, worded correctly, the motion, but this cover sheet is just to be sure that you have the correct information in front of you.
So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with one add-on, Consent 09, and then one modification? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Vote, call for the vote? Ayes have it? Nay? The ayes have it. All right, thank you. All right, so now is the time for our regular meeting agenda. It's already been set in front of you, you all have it as well. Are there any additions? I'm not aware of any. Are there any additions from council members?
Is there not a... Is there not a...
It's a correction, woman.
That's just a correction.
Correction.
But thank you for asking, yeah. All right. All right, so is there a motion?
Is that moved?
I'll say.
All right. Aye?
Aye, huh?
Nay? All right. All right, so now we're moving into our time of public forum. So the clerk will bring the sheets to me. I think there are some signatures there. If you have the policy, just a reminder, you have, the buttons will, the clerk will, thank you, start the buttons, and will let us, let you know when you're at, it'll start with green, and then we'll have caution, and then red is, that's it. So there are only four people signed up. So we've got Elaine Okel, Rheta Riordan, Jenny Couture Lynch, and Cheryl Stallings, in that order. So Elaine.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Elaine Okel. I am one of the co-chairs of the League of Women Voters Wake County ERA Team and the lead of the Congressional District Two Team for the ERA NC Alliance. Thank you for your attention and considering the resolution in support of ratification of the Equal Rights Amendment. Excuse me. Section 1 of the amendment states, "Equality of rights under the law shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of sex." We have supporters here today from the League of Women Voters and our partners in the fight for the Equal Rights Amendment, the ERA NC Alliance. There are many reasons why the ERA is important. Today, I will talk about the economic status of women. Women working full-time in North Carolina make 81 cents for every dollar a man earns working full-time. At the current rate, the wage gap will not close until 2060. This wage gap follows women throughout their lives as bonuses, raises, pensions, and Social Security benefits are based on salary. Earnings inequality for working women translates into lower lifetime pay, higher rates of poverty, and less income for families, communities, and state economies. If working women in North Carolina were paid the same as men, the poverty rate among working women would be reduced by more than half. The ERA would help set more realistic legal standards to prove sex discrimination at work and remove the loophole that prevents equal pay for equal work, removing pay inequity. Thank you for your attention today for this important subject. We ask you to vote in support of the resolution to ratify the Equal Rights Amendment.
Thank you. Rheta Riordan? I did fail to mention that if you are in agreement with what you've heard, then we like to be accessible and do what we call the deaf finger, so.
Thanks. Madam Mayor Pro Tem and members of the town council, my name is Rheta Riordan. I live at 313 Jean DeClare Drive in Apex. I commend Councilwoman Killingsworth for introducing an important resolution tonight supporting ratification of the Equal Rights Amendment and urge unanimous adoption of the resolution. As Elaine said, the Equal Rights Amendment has only 24 simple words. Because equality under the law seems so basic, you would think we wouldn't need a constitutional amendment to protect the rights of half the population in this country, especially in 2019. Unfortunately, that's not the case. Women continue to be discriminated against solely on the basis of our gender, which impacts every aspect of our lives. Today, I'll focus on only one, our economic disadvantage. In Wake County, there's a 22 cent per hour wage gap, which follows us through our lives. Women tend to be hired at lower salaries than men, and our raises are based on, of course, base salaries. Bonuses, then, are based on those salaries as well, so the total compensation for women is lower. Future employers base salary for a new job on the previous salary, so year after year, job after job, women are subjected to salary discrimination, and the gap grows. And it doesn't end there. Even in our senior years, this systemic discrimination haunts us, as Social Security is also based on our salary history. So it's a women's issue, yes, but it's also a socioeconomic issue. The economic impact of wage discrimination against women is felt throughout society. The entire family suffers, and even more so in families that have single women. Children suffer, and society suffers, as there's less to spend on essentials and discretionary items. I've heard several objections to the ER, to passage of the ERA, but I think the most insalient one I've heard is, "Why is the ERA necessary? Doesn't the 14th Amendment to the Constitution provide equal protection?" It's a good question, but the truth is that the Constitution should provide equal protection to women, but it doesn't. The courts have held that the 14th Amendment provides equal protection on the basis of race and national origin, but not on the basis of sex. In fact, the late Justice Antonin Scalia famously said, and I quote, "Certainly, the Constitution does not require discrimination on the basis of sex. The only issue is whether it prohibits it. It does not," unquote. There's significant movement here in North Carolina on the ERA now. Legislation cosponsored by our own Julie Von Haven has once again been introduced in the North Carolina General Assembly, ratifying the ERA. And eight days ago, the Wake County Commission unanimously adopted a resolution introduced by our own Susan Evans urging the general counsel to pass a law to ratify the ERA. With your vote on the resolution telling the General Assembly that we in Apex support equal treatment of women, North Carolina could make history being the 38th state to ratify the ERA and ensure that women have equal rights. Thank you for your vote in favor of this all-important resolution.
Thank you. Jenny?
Ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I want to thank you for the occasion to speak, that we are speaking of the Equal Rights Amendment. I have lived in Apex for a long time, since 1986, and I am a longtime worker and voter in Apex. I care about it a great deal. However, what I'm wearing today kind of harks back to when women didn't even have the vote, and we wore sashes to support it. My sister-in-law from Easter Island reminds me that women of Easter Island got the vote years before American women. We are behind on so many items. We are behind on the Equal Rights Amendment. I campaigned in the Tennessee Legislature as a college student to try and help get the bill passed in the 1970s, and as many of you, well, y'all are younger, I mean, some of you probably remember, some of you know. It didn't pass then, it needs to pass now. I'm not gonna give you facts like the others did, because they have covered it well, but I'm telling you that it matters to half of the population. We need to have our rights protected in the Constitution, and it's a voting matter. More and more of us, more millennial young women than I know, are voting on the question of equal rights for women. Don't let us down. Please, I'm asking you to urge the General Assembly to do their job and put North Carolina over the top so that we finally get this amendment into our Constitution. Thank you very much for the chance to speak.
Cheryl?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and town council members and staff. My name is Cheryl Stallings, and I live at 2009 Abbey Knoll Drive in Apex. My comments tonight are also about the ERA related to your new business item on adopting the resolution in support of House Bill 271, which would ratify the Equal Rights Amendment. Women make up about 51% of our population. However, the United States Constitution, which was ratified almost 230 years ago, still fails to guarantee gender equality. While the 14th Amendment does provide some protection, it does not provide a constitutional guarantee against gender discrimination. No place is this more apparent than in income inequality between women and men. Even though Congress passed the Equal Pay Act about 56 years ago, women still earn less than men in North Carolina. In 2018, the North Carolina Council for Women and Youth Involvement published a report that stated the following. "In comparison to white men, white women in our state earn an average of 81 cents on the dollar. African-American women earn 63 cents. And Hispanic women earn a shocking 49 cents." If women were paid the same as men in North Carolina, they would receive a 19% raise on average. These are dollars that could be spent investing in homes, paying for college tuition and health insurance, putting food on the table, and paying for childcare. When women suffer, our economy and our families suffer. John Kerry once said, "No country can truly get ahead if it leaves half of its people behind." So in closing, I hope that Apex will join other local governments in raising our collective voices for gender equality and adopt a resolution in support of House Bill 271. Thank you.
Thank you. We're at the end of our list here, so I'll close the public forum, and then we will go into our public hearings. Public hearing number one, Amanda Bunce, current planning manager.
Okay, we have a couple of amendments to the UDO to present tonight, and I'll pause after each one to see if you have any questions. So the first amendment is to the parking lot design standards section in order to clarify the location where parking lots should be located with sites with multiple frontages. And so currently, the ordinance reads that the purpose is to highlight the, to increase, to maximize the exposure of the primary structure, and then requires fifty percent of the off-street parking to be to the side or rear. But it really doesn't give much guidance when there's multiple frontages. So there's been interpretations made in the past consistently, and now we're simply codifying the interpretation that's been made in the past. So that the change would be, the goal is to maximize the exposure of the primary structure to the primary street, still keeping that same ratio of no more than fifty percent of the off-street parking spaces located between the building and that primary street. Now, if there's more than one street or internal drive abutting the property, the designation of that primary street shall be based on the functional classification as determined by the planning director. So a thoroughfare would have a higher preference over a collector's street. And I just have a couple of quick images to just represent the intent of this standard. So this is the Methodist Church on Salem Street. In fact, all of its parking is to the side, none is in the front of the building. Thales Academy behind it does have some parking, but predominantly to the side or rear. So where this really gets at is in this example along 55, this is the Foodline Shopping Center up near Jinks, Old Jinks Road. The goal was to protect the view from along 55, and so we would want where the front door is, not to restrict the parking in front of the front door in this case, but to restrict the amount of parking along the 55 frontage. And so this ensures that that is done. So this is a visual to represent that amendment. Any questions there?
Have you guys thought about that number being correct? The fifty percent should be, I mean, have you thought, talked, have you bandied about different numbers, like seventy-five or whatever?
Whenever we revised a lot of the parking section last summer, we did talk about that percentage, did some research in other communities, and decided that that was really just a good number to stay at. I mean, oftentimes, it's contextual, but to set something in the ordinance, we felt comfortable keeping that number.
Any other questions on that?
Along that, did you take into consideration property size? I mean, smaller properties may run into a lot more trouble.
We haven't experienced that to be a particular issue, and this only applies whenever there's, or there are some exemptions, excuse me, that when the lot requires thirty-five parking spaces or less, then it's exempt from that requirement.
That picks that poll.
Yep.
Any more questions for Ms. Bunce? Go to the next amendment.
Okay. So this next amendment is actually adding something that's missing in the UDO. So in the use table, we have a symbol, a percent symbol, with uses in certain districts. And what that means is there's a limitation on the percentage of that use in that district. And so the, for retail sales general, that percentage is in the use table currently for tech flux and light industrial, but what was missing was the percentage limitation for the tech flux district. We typically don't see retail users wanting to go in tech flux. When one came and asking to locate somewhere, then we realize, oh, we're missing a standard in the UDO. So the proposal was to add the language within the tech flux district, the floor area of retail sales general uses shall not occupy more than thirty percent of the gross floor area of the development. And this percentage is consistent with the standard already in the LI district, and just simply some tweaking of the language there to make it flow better. No substantial change to the LI district standard.
And this was added, because I talked to the guy who developed that one, because of traffic and in-and-out numbers, is that why the thirty percent's there?
It's more to protect the tech flux and light industrial uses so that they are there for the more intense uses and that retail uses don't tend to take up space that should be devoted for contractors' office, storage yard, manufacturing, or other higher-intensity uses. Let the retail uses be focused more in the commercial areas.
Okay.
Any more questions on amendment two?
And planning staff recommends approval, as did the planning board at their meeting. It was unanimous recommendation for approval at their meeting last week.
Okay. So there's no one signed up for this public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing, and I'll close the public hearing, and I'll send it back to council for a motion, discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Vote aye?
Aye.
Vote no? Okay, said aye, have it.
These leaders, if you're in favor, say aye.
I know, it sounds so awkward, I know. All right. So now we're going to go into old business. And so old business oh one, Mr. Tom Colwell, Chair of the Public Art Committee.
Thank you, Town Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you once again about public art. Greatly appreciate that. I'm here to request your approval for a sculpture to be installed downtown. So as a reminder, a little bit of background on this project, this sculpture's part of photography program that we have proposed that'll take points of interest around Apex and identify those as preferred locations to take photographs and for people to post on public media or other, you know, social media with hashtags such as ThinkApex or hashtag ApexNC or hashtag LoveApex, something to this effect. We're working also with Stacy Galloway in marketing to make sure it kind of goes along with the flow of other marketing around the town. But the sculpture portion, as well as the idea around the program, was approved for the 2018-19 budget year. And then a call for artists, I brought that forward several months ago, and this council approved going out for the call. So we've gone through that process, and there was a selection committee that gathered a few weeks ago. And that committee was made up of members of the Public Art Committee. Councilman Gant represented the Town Council, and we had Shannon Flaherty from the Apex Chamber there as part of that committee as well. And after some discussion, I came up with a recommendation. So I'd like to read an excerpt from the submission from the artist, just to give a little bit of a description on the art. And also, in your package of material, you may want to flip through there, and if you had an opportunity to take a look at the images from the art. It's not yet built, so those are just that, design concepts or images for the artwork. "Trajectory," which is the name of the work, "is made of beams of steel rising toward each other, connecting at the top. As the taller beams meet with the shorter ones, they create triangles. The apexes follow a spiraling arch trajectory. The open space inside the triangle is faced with mirrors reflecting some of the space outside, but mostly the space inside. The path through the sculpture becomes an intertwined commingling of lines. Trajectory is about interconnectivity and progression along a curvilinear route. It's also about support. When one beam rises, another beam rises with it. The upward and downward undulation of the sculpture reflects our life's ups and downs, where forces within and without move us through a course that is complex and connected to things and people from many different angles. No one moves forward independently. We are all constantly affected by the world around us." So this is the concept by the artist who made the submission, the one we've selected and brought forward for your approval. So I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Colwell?
How many artists, how many submissions did you get?
We received two.
Two?
Mm-hmm.
I noticed this individual's from Roanoke. Was the other individual, where are they from?
The other was from Cary.
From Cary?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
There was some discussion about the color, so is the idea to keep it as the blue color in the final line?
Well, the artist is also willing to make modifications as needed, so I did speak to him, and he's certainly open to color change.
Okay, so the committee may discuss that and possibly, if they want to, if they want to address that some, change that.
That's correct.
Okay, but the form would be the same?
Correct.
Okay.
I love the form of this, by the way. It just looks really neat. And forms an apex.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Colwell? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so you had a question related to location of the artist, and then you had a question related to color. And so when I'm looking at the possible motion, it says to approve the sculpture project, and then the location. So if there are issues related to color, then I guess my question is, would the motion need to approve, to include something like that, just to be able to modify the colors or to send suggestions or?
Yes. I think the council could give some direction perhaps to Mr. Colwell and his committee to determine the best color, unless the council wants to weigh in on color selection.
Okay, all right. So where's your motion, discussion?
So I'll go make a motion, let me first, or we'll discuss. Okay, yeah, I make a motion to approve the location from the Chamber Building for this piece with some discretion given to the art committee that the color may be some, maybe flexible, maybe not neon green or neon something pink, whatever, but some discretion on the color if desired. But overall, the form and location, I think, I told them, there was the two submissions, I told them to go bold with, or I suggested to them that to go bold with, yeah, sorry. I'll finish the motion, sorry. With some flexibility on color as well.
All right. Okay, now discussion?
Okay, so it's a pretty, I think, a little bit out-there sculpture, and the other one I thought was a little more simple, but I thought, you know, this is our, kind of our first art installation in this area, and a kind of initiation of this public art funding that we've done. So I think it will be a kind of a showpiece, and we'll get a lot of people's attention, and it'll be pretty exciting. And I think there'll be a lot of interaction with this sculpture in front of the Chamber Building. So that's why I suggested them to kind of, to be bold with this choice, and they all decided, you know, after some, quite a bit of discussion, that this was the, what their preference was. But I'm really excited, and I think this will be a dynamite addition to downtown.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I can't support this at this time. Not only do I think we need to spend our money in other places than on public art, we've already had that discussion, though. But I think we need to, in honor of the presentation we just made about ThinkApex, I think we should think more locally with the artists of the art that we display and not go to anybody out there in the United States. I think we need to focus more on Apex, so I'm not going to support this.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anyone else?
How tall is this sculpture? It looks to me like eight or ten feet.
Question for Mr. Colwell?
Yeah.
It's around eight feet.
Eight feet?
Which I can speak to. It sounds tall. Then, when we went outside and it was raining, we had an umbrella up about eight feet. It fit, I thought the surroundings, because there's trees beside it that are twenty feet tall, and, yeah. In my head, I thought it sounded way too tall, and then when I was thinking about it in real life, it seemed reasonable.
Anyone else?
I personally like the color, but that's, my wife tells me that I don't know anything about color, so.
I mean, yeah, I think there's flexibility. I mean, I think, there was a discussion about whether it was going to match the kind of more red brick of downtown.
Yep.
Which would stand out more, but I think the committee, given the flexibility.
Oh, yeah, I agree with that.
Committee, I think will make a good choice.
I just wanted to voice my opinion.
Okay, yeah, maybe, maybe that's the direction to take, I guess, too.
I'll call for the votes. So those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those not in favor or opposed?
No.
Okay. That passes, motion passes. All right, so we have, thank you so much, unfinished business, there is none for consideration, and we're going to move into new business. New business number one is Councilmember Bill Jensen.
As you know, we talked about the Environmental Stewardship Award and gave staff some direction to come up with kind of an outline. And I'm sure you've read the outline. This would be just to give direction to staff to put meat on the bones, and then come back to us for a final decision. So I'm just hoping that we can move this thing, move it forward.
So Jensen, do you want to share a little bit more about the award, a little more detailed than that?
Well, the Environmental Stewardship Award, I initially started pushing it because of solar photovoltaics and people, people willing to do, to step out ahead and do something for the environment where it makes it better for everybody. And sometimes they have to take a chance or spend more money than they're going to get back. And this award just kind of takes a look at what they've done and gives them a piece of paper that acknowledges the town of Apex appreciates what they're doing. I look at it, and then there's the other parts of it where, other than solar, you know, it's planting trees, it's doing all sorts of different environmental-type things, and we certainly did recognize people for doing what, for doing environmental efforts.
Okay, thank you for that. So any discussion, questions for Mr., new comments?
I think this is a great idea, you know, recognizing people for going above and beyond, especially being friendly to the environment is, you know, any way we can encourage that is great. So I agree.
You know, I look at, on the solar thing, I never knew Target out here had a huge solar PV system on the roof, went out ahead, stepped out ahead. None of the other big businesses did that, and I think something like that you need to recognize and say thank you.
So maybe in a breach of Robert Tules, can I make a suggestion for this?
Wait a minute.
I think it's a little bit solar-centric, as a solar being a category by itself. Would you consider amending the categories to be residential and business as such a categories, and solar can be included in either one of those? Because I think it focuses kind of the categories we normally have for, like, ThinkApex a little bit better.
Yeah, the reason I thought it would be nice to break it up this way is that there's going to be a number of solar items coming in. I'd like to see us recognize these people as soon as possible, and if we have to wait to go through committee and that sort of thing, then I think that there will be delay. I believe in Pavlov and reward immediately after a deed. And so I broke it up that way and tried to keep all the rest to go through the full mechanism of going through the selection committee. Solar doesn't need to do that. I mean, it's just, it would just almost be a hand crank to a degree, and staff would make the decision.
I would argue that residential and commercial categories could be hand-cranked as well, and they could be, you know, not adding much time to the discussion. And, you know, I think giving a category, getting, sometimes maybe it's harder to get commercial to do certain things than residential, and I think separating that out would make more sense.
To me, I could see separating it out, but under the solar set, where county staff takes a look at it and just makes the decision to pass or not pass, or to provide an award or not provide an award.
And possible recognition on our website would be a good idea.
Any other questions or concerns, comments?
So would you want to do the residential, non-residential?
So I feel like, I'm looking at Mr. Town Manager over there. I feel like, yeah, what we could do is, at this point, if we're done with the discussion, then maybe direct staff to look at your concern along with the current proposed policy and see if they're, if they have any, you know, proposals for us that can maybe incorporate what your concern is. Yours, Mr. Gant?
How about a suggestion that we have, we may have a solar category, but have residential and commercial be two subsets inside that category?
Agreed with that.
And then we, category two could have subsets of residential and commercial with the other than solar.
I'm, that's what I thought we were going to do.
So do you have those notes, Mr. Manager? Okay, so it sounds like that there is more agreement now on the award, given your addition here, and we're going to direct the manager to make this policy, this award, more robust to incorporate your concern. And then the spirit of the award.
And what the awards will look like to a degree, I suppose.
Okay, all right. So, thank you. All right, so I don't think, I think we just direct the manager to do that, we don't need to vote for that. Okay, thank you. Now we're on new Now we're on new business number two, Mr. Havens, Town Manager, can you introduce new business number two for us that we heard more about?
Yes, ma'am, this is a, give in front of you a resolution to provide a grant of up to $1,300 to Operation Coming Home to cover the actual costs for building plan review and building permits and inspections, this is related to the presentation you heard earlier from Mr. Kane and Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, so, I believe we, we heard everything, I think that you all wanted to present, there was just two people presenting, and so new business really is for us to discuss this and discussion leading to a possible motion, so is there a motion with discussion?
Can we just make a motion?
Go ahead and make a motion and, all right, and that's a second, all right?
This is wonderful, what these guys are doing.
Hey, I would agree that, yeah, helping give like this to, do this great project, I think is easy, easy use of town money to facilitate this, so I'm really excited.
Might as well go ahead and order, so I'll just say that I know, I believe our state is like fourth or fifth highest in veteran population, maybe over 800,000 veterans, and I think a lot of us are used to saying, "Thank you for your service," but I like the fact, as an advocate, you went, you go further than that, "Thank you for your service and," and so that's what I think is important, to make sure that we're taking care and doing what's right in our local communities as well for the people who, and the families who are left behind and often not always talked about, and so thank you for what you're doing and doing it in Apex, appreciate it.
Yeah, phenomenal job, awesome for doing this, and, and we've gotten a letter up here on the council from other developers who've done other awesome things in our community, and, you know, this is something that's definitely going above and beyond, so you can tell it's close to your heart and you have a passion for it, so great job.
Let me add also, there's like a bus to move at some point, that'd be great, too, so we can get the feel of the old show, I'm just kidding.
Oh my gosh, you went all the way back there.
We got it, ma'am.
I know, any word, comments, discussion?
I think this is great, and I'm glad, be glad to support this, so.
All right, I'm going to call for the vote, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, motion passes. Thank you. So now we're at new business three, Councilmember Audrey Killingsworth.
So, this is a resolution in support of the Equal Rights Amendment, we currently have both House Bill 271 and Senate Bill 184 in the North Carolina General Assembly, and we are, basically this resolution just encourages our state officials to pass this measure. I've heard comments from several people, as I've said, I'd like to introduce an Equal Rights Amendment resolution, that questioned the need for this in the United States, in the state of North Carolina, and in the town of Apex. There have been over 150 federal laws that discriminate against people based on sex alone, and since the 1950s, some of those laws have been struck down in the courts. Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg said, "Every constitution written since the end of World War II includes a provision that men and women are citizens of equal stature, ours does not, it's not in there. There is currently not a constitutional basis for protections against gender-based violence or discrimination. Currently, if you sue for getting paid less because of sex, it is thrown out of court. There are currently no requirements to make reasonable work accommodations for women who are pregnant, and so on. The passage of the ERA is needed to make changes across state and federal laws to help the US become a global leader in women's rights. People have asked why this matters for the town of Apex. The passage of an ERA resolution at the town level signals to our elected officials at the state level that the passage of the ERA is needed and wanted. If North Carolina were to pass the Equal Rights Amendment, it would permanently enshrine equal rights for women in our US Constitution, whereas now, it is only protected by our court system. Fifty point eight percent of the population of the US is women. Right here in the town of Apex, we have 141 department heads and/or supervisors, 109 of which are men and 32 of which are women. On our staff, we have a total of 441 town employees, 349 are men, or that's 79%, and 92, or 21%, are women. I would love to see policy changes at our municipal level to blind hiring managers to a person's name and gender until the interview, with no mention of previous pay rates. I would also like to see policy changes in place for outreach in hiring practices to encourage more women to apply to open positions. I would also like to see women's groups within the town to encourage leadership and training." So Acting Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem Nicole DeJure, if you'll read the resolution.
Thank you. All right, resolution in support of the Equal Rights Amendment, ERA, whereas with the filing of North Carolina House Bill 271 and Senate Bill 184, North Carolina has a historic chance to secure equal rights for all and that women and men are treated equally under the law, and whereas the town of Apex supports equal rights for the citizens of Apex and women constitute over 51% of the citizenry of Apex, and whereas the Town Council of Apex recognized March as Women's History Month and that women play a critical role in families, at the workplace, and policymaking, and in society as a whole, contributing to our economy and advancing our nation, and whereas women continue to experience workplace discrimination, healthcare inequities, disparate rates of poverty, human trafficking, interpersonal violence, and a lack of political parity, and whereas the ERA is needed to help correct systemic sex discrimination, since the US Constitution does not explicitly guarantee that all the rights that it protects are held equally by all citizens without regard to sex, and whereas state laws and federal laws are not uniform or comprehensive and can be repealed or inadequately enforced or interpreted, and the Fourteenth Amendment's equal protection clause has never been interpreted to guarantee equal rights for women in the same way the ERA would, by making sex a suspect category invoking strict judicial scrutiny as race, national origin, and religion do, and whereas the ERA was proposed in 1923, passed by Congress in 1972, and ratified by 35 of the 38 states necessary to put it into the Constitution as of a June 30, 1982 time limit, and whereas Congress can alter time limits in the proposing clauses of amendments and the deadline for ERA appeared only in the preamble and not in the text of the amendment, now therefore be it resolved that the town of Apex calls on the North Carolina General Assembly to make history by passing into law House Bill 271 and Senate Bill 184 to become the 38th state to ratify the ERA to the US Constitution as proposed by Congress on March 22, 1972, adopted the 16th day of April 2019. So you've heard the preamble, discussion, the, the resolution, is there a motion leading to a, a motion leading to a vote, and there's your discussion after that?
I would like to make a motion to approve this resolution.
Okay, I'll second that. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, Ms. Killingsworth, you mentioned about the town creating a resolution to not base our hiring on sex, I think you said blind hiring, Town Manager, do we, do we screen applications, whether they're male or female, when we get applications?
There is demographic information provided to HR, not to the hiring authority, however, there are some times when the name makes it, can make it clear.
Right, but it's not, it's not a specific item that's looked at when we hire individuals, whether they check M or F?
No.
Okay, how about when we pay our employees, is that a decision that's made, whether they check M or F in the town of Apex?
No.
Or is it based on like their performance or what they've did, how their review has gone by their supervisor?
Well, the hiring, the hiring ranges are, are set, and we make people offers based on qualification experience.
So, Mr. Moore, I think what I want to do, I don't, I think that, I want to stop you there and ask you to do this, so the resolution on the table, I read that, but those were Ms. Killingsworth's thoughts, and so, those are her thoughts and desires, if she would like to make that into a proposal at this time or another time, then I would suggest that we would bring that to the Personnel Committee for discussion, for more robust discussion, to give people time to get, gather information, that kind, I think that would be a better.
Okay, yeah, I thought that's what she was asking for, was a, a blind hiring process.
I think in her, yeah, I think, no, that's fine, I think that she was sort of expressing her reason or kind of her preamble to why she wanted to do this, but she didn't ask for us to vote on a proposal or a policy to change the way we do things, and I think that's a longer discussion, I'm happy to, as a Chair of Personnel, to, to address those concerns, when it gives the, the staff time to actually get that information, she just wants to put it out there, like this is what's, what's driving her.
Okay, a couple more things, I think, would you mention 79/21 is the ratio, 79% male, 21% female?
That was as of March, yes.
As of March, and I think as of March, our senior leadership team in the town of Apex is 58% male and 42% female, the director level at the town, is that correct? So I guess my, my point is, is that we're elected to represent the citizens of Apex, and this is not, clearly not an issue or a problem with the town of Apex, if our citizens want to go, or every resident in North Carolina wants to go to the state legislature, we talked about this before with other resolutions that we're trying to support here at the town level, I think we need to stay focused on town issues, I think the ERA is a great thing, but I don't think we need to worry about this, it clearly is not an issue in the town of Apex with our employees, so I want to stay focused on Apex, I think that's what we're elected to do, so I, I can't support going to the General Assembly with something that doesn't relate to Apex, if we want to go individually and talk to the state legislators, then I think that's a great idea, but.
When we have 109 men that are supervisors and/or managers, that counts everybody in a leadership position, and we have 32 women in those same positions, that is a-
How many?
132 women and 109 men, that is very much biased.
So again, I think that these are great discussions, but I think I'm involved in them in my daytime work, and I think it's important to talk about these things, I think she was saying this is where her heart is related to that, and my heart is similar there, and I, so I, you know, it's a little bit, to have a discussion about male and female in this situation related to this, I don't think that, you know, we need to probably prolong that, but what I will, will say is, again, happy to, excited to talk about this and, and Personnel, I cheer that, that's fine, we can do that, if Ms. Killingsworth would like to do that, I'll honor that, and one thing I will say, take a point of personal privilege, is that, you know, the numbers, the data comes from people who look at the numbers and crunch the numbers, and I will say, as a mom who has a daughter, a mama has a mother, personally, a daughter has a mother, I think that most men in, in this area would want what's best for their mothers, their daughters, or nieces and all, and so even if there's no issue with whatever we're talking about at the time, that's like a federal level or state level, if we're in the, we're in the world, it does kind of impact us if we really believe in community, and so I think of myself as someone who should be going to other levels of government to make sure that harmful policies don't pass that impact Apex residents, and if I lose on it, then at least I've gone to the General Assembly, I've gone to Congress and said, "This proposal is harmful, and I want you to reject this, but I want you to approve this really good one." So that's how I see myself as a voice for people, not a voice, but someone who amplifies their voice, and so I don't think it's just about, just about the town employees, but just Apex people, some of us don't, most of us don't work here, so, that's what I'll just say sort of response to that, but I'm happy to have a, a more robust conversation at later date due Personnel. Any other discussions?
I want to chime in, so I personally support the ERA, and I, I'm frankly proud that our local representative, Julia Von Hayfen, is one of the primary sponsors of the, of the resolution, that being said, I agree with Mr. Moyer that I don't think the resolution's appropriate for the town of Apex's government, I think it's a state issue, I think he's right, there's a ton of stuff we could advocate for, Medicaid expansion would be one that I would advocate for first, but I don't think it's appropriate for a town that does police, fire, infrastructure, to be doing this kind of advocating, and I think this, this action will be viewed as partisan and possibly antagonistic to the General Assembly, and when we ask for things like a resolution on trees or a resolution on impact fees, I think they will remember this and view this, view Apex unfavorably as a result, and so, in the spirit of the ERA, though, I think I'd like to substitute, make a motion to substitute this item for the following, that we have, that we've tabled the vote in the resolution and instead instruct the Town Manager to present to the council an annual report of the gender and racial makeup of the staff, some personally non-identifiable instances of discrimination if they exist, and any, any resulting action from that, from that discrimination investigation, and also to highlight the town's efforts to address hiring inequities and workplace discrimination overall, including possibly efforts toward blind hiring and, and some of the things that Councilwoman Killingsworth mentioned.
Thank you for your comments.
Well, I think what we're looking at tonight is a resolution that doesn't truly directly involve the town, what you're suggesting is, I think, mostly focused on the town, I think this resolution is focused on every woman in America, not just every woman in Apex, and from that standpoint, I think that, I think we represent the town of Apex and we have a little bit more clout to say to the General Assembly, "You really need to take a good, close look at this and do what is correct." So I support, I support the resolution, I also believe that the town is very independent in terms of hiring versus sexual, versus sex, because as you said, we've got, or one of you said, we've got a fire department, we've got a police department, and those tend to be very heavily men, and we have a utilities department that people are out there digging ditches and cutting down trees, that tends to have, be heavily men, so I can see why our town staff is heavier men in terms of, of what we hire and what the percentages are, it's because of the jobs, and I think we always have to look at, what is the job that the person is going into, and if the, the job is, is a heavy construction or something like that, we have to understand that that's going to be men, in the office, completely different, I mean, there's, picking up a pencil is not like picking up on a ladder or something like that, so I, I think it, in, in that arena, we can take a close look at it, but in terms of the people out in the field, I can understand fully from the town that, where we are at, and I think, I think the town staff has done a very good job, that's my personal viewpoint, but I do support the ERA amend, uh, resolution here because I think it's necessary, and it's, it's about damn time that we did something in the United States to get this thing passed, one state away, it sends chills, it does, it turns chills down my back that we have a chance in North Carolina to be the one, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask for a point of order with the, the motion to table the vote and direct the council for, direct the manager for the annual report on equality?
First, I want to do as I did with, with Mr. Moyer and direct your concerns related to the General Assembly, since my job is highly focused on things that come out of the General Assembly, and you know I work every day, I've been working on Medicaid expansion since it was pulled out by the Supreme Court in 2012, I would love for you to bring that to the council as a resolution, that would be my honor to do that, so I would be honored to do that, the other piece, I think in, in suggesting that Ms. Killingsworth reject what she's done and then take yours instead of, you know, it may feel a little bit like some of the things that she said, you know, and doing it that way, she is, she is able to, she's able to make her decision on that, as the person made the motion, she's also able to do this and add some of that, what she feels good about, but you're asking her to, to swap it, I think that's something that she needs to think about, so I'll let, I'll leave that up to Ms. Killingsworth, because it's her motion.
I prefer to take a vote on what's before us.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All opposed?
No.
All right. Motion passes. All right. So now we are entering in time to go to closed session to consult with the town attorney. I ask for a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All, all in favor going into closed session? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Going to closed session.
We do have one other item after.
Yes, we'll come back. Mm-hmm. All right. So we are going into closed session and we're going to take, we'll come back and then we have a work session after that. So we're going into closed session and we have to come back and do, and vote on an item. And then after that, we'll be, we'll take a five-minute break and then we're going to go into a special work session in the conference room across the hall, which all of our sessions, open, open government, people are, have to come, have to be able to come. But there will be no public comment or forum for our work session. But we are not adjourned. We're just going into the closed session. Thank you.